Go ahead and start the Kechai City Council meeting for Thursday, August 22, 2024. Everyone can please stand for... Oh, I'm sorry. It's a long day. Debbie, could you please hold roll?
Paul Weyer.
Here.
Karen Nigerson.
Here.
Kate Baldwin.
Here.
Addison.
Here.
Here.
All right, we have a call now. Everyone can please stand for the pledge.
To the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to approving tonight's agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's agenda? Matt, do we have an executive session?
No executive session.
All right, I would strike item 11. Any questions, council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the agenda striking item 11 for the executive session.
Second?
I have a motion by Todd, second by Matt. All in favor say aye.
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 Carrie's five oh. Move on to approving tonight's consent agenda and council, council questions on tonight's consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second? I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen. All in favor say aye.
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 Carrie's five oh. Move on to the communications section. Kechai civic groups or committees? Do we have any Kechai civic groups or committees here to speak? Seeing none, I will move on to Kechai good news. Counsel, any Kechai good news?
Well, I do. So, the Best of Wichita voting nominations are out, so from now until September, I believe it's sixth, you can go in and vote for your favorite nonprofit, or attorney, or a lot of other things. But I wanted to highlight some of the businesses that are being, have been nominated and are hoping to win this year. So Bridget Cradle is up for nonprofit organization. Old School Tap House is up in two categories, one for bars and taverns, and the other one for beer selection. Bloomerang is up for florists, and Kechai Playhouse is up for live theater. So if you go to the Best of Wichita, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Junk in the Truck is also nominated for shopping under antiques and collectibles.
Thank you. That was gonna be my next ask, so as if anybody else knew, many others that I had missed. Please let me know so I can go and vote for them. You can vote once a day. So obviously, I know they would love for you all to go and vote for them so that they can win Best of Wichita 2024. Next, Teresa was nominated and received the Bloomerang gift back. She was nominated by Margaret McCormick for her vital role here at the city and how committed she is to the city. And those flowers were beautiful. They looked amazing. Definitely well deserved. Thank you so much, Teresa. And then we did post the first Kechai newsletter, and it came out, and we had a lot of great positive feedback. So thank you for everyone who worked on it, who posted, who helped with all of that. We look forward to sending the next one out next quarter. That's all I have for Kechai good news, unless anybody has any. Yes, Matt?
Mayor, I would like to tell everybody that our mayor was nominated for the Wichita 30 under 30. And maybe you can explain a little more on that, if you know, look more detail on that.
Yeah, so I was nominated and was on, am on the list for Next Gen Year 30. It's a huge group of Kansans who have devoted themselves to excellence here in Kansas. And so everybody who's on the list has made a significant contribution to their community in some way. There's a lot of different categories, but I was nominated under public service. So, thank you. I have the opportunity to go to Topeka on September 10th if I'm in town. I have two business things going on at the same time, so we'll see if I can. But September 10th, if I'm in town, I'll be able to go and meet the governor and lieutenant governor to receive that word. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And, go ahead.
Bloomerang floral gifts was also highlighted in a local magazine recently, the August edition of Stroll, which is a local magazine on the west side of town, so.
Awesome. Awesome. Lots of great things for Bloomerang right now.
I just have one thing. So Mayor Ashley and Todd and I all went to the coffee last Saturday up at Sunnydale, and let's see several folks at Sunnydale. It was a great time. I highly encourage our citizens to attend if they can, any of the coffees that are available. So that was a great time. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll move on to public form. Public wishing to address the council are asked to sign a public form request form in the foyer, listing your topic along with your name, address, and phone number for the record. You're asked to limit your presentation to five minutes. Your comments or requests may be addressed at a future meeting. And I will pull up my PowerPoint. And Debbie, who do we have first?
Beth Alderson. Hello to you all. Thank you for serving the state council. And I'm proud to be here tonight. And once again, address the council. It's been a long time. But I'm here just to say that on the Kechai, 61st Street and Oliver intersection, that's going to interfere greatly with my daily trips to the post office. That's the only reason I come to Kechai, is to go to the post office. And I think that it could have been handled differently without interfering with north and south traffic to reach 254, or the other interests like the post office. And that's all I have to say about that, but I regret that that intersection will be shut down for most of the year. And I would say that I wish the council would rethink that construction.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Joni Harris.
Joni.
Joni Harris, 109 West Tupperware Street. Madam Mayor and members of council, tonight I would ask that you would honor the residents of Kechai. Once again, prepare for a budget hearing, and you walk in and you see that you're limiting presentations to three minutes during a once-a-year hearing. There was very limited opportunity to get to interact with the council, ask questions about budget. A July meeting was canceled. An August meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum. There was no public workshop presenting the budget. And so I ask that you would please give us opportunity tonight to have our full five minutes, which is what is stated on the City of Kechai website, in presenting what we have to present in the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other for public floor? All right, we will close public forum for the evening. Move on to old business, public hearing revenue neutral rate. Matt?
Mayor and council, what you have before you is the Revenue Neutral Rate Public Hearing, where it is the city council's chance to hear any public comments as it relates to the Revenue Neutral Rate. What the council needs to do is open the public hearing for the Revenue Neutral Rate, and then we will present it eventually as a conference.
Okay, I would open the public hearing.
Okay, we're good. First time?
Okay, Beth Alderson. I want to clarify this three minutes.
I'm sorry, I believe that you wanted to speak on the budget. Correct. Yeah, we clarified that.
Oh, okay.
Give us just a minute.
This is Cheryl.
Cheryl. Okay, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council, staff. So regarding the neutral rate, I would appreciate if the council and the city would take another look at that. And in the letter that I got, didn't really say exactly what the neutral rate was, but to look at the 32 mils that we currently had last year. And instead of going with the neutral rate. We have a lot of folks here that are paycheck to paycheck. We have a lot of people here that are on fixed incomes. They, with the price of food, with the price of everything. You know, let's give people a break. Okay? I know we're gonna talk about the budget, so I'm also gonna speak to that with maybe some creative, maybe some other options for that as well. So that we could keep that at the 32 mil instead of going to the business, the revenue neutral. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other for resolution? Okay, I will close the public hearing for Revenue Neutral Rate. Our resolution 24-770.
Mayor and council, what you have before you is the Revenue Neutral Rate Resolution. Basically, it notifies the county and the state that we are going to exceed the Revenue Neutral Rate of 32 point... Just to say it, 32.859 mils. Last year, our mil levy was set at 36.667, the Revenue Neutral Rate. What that means essentially is if this year we were to spend $1 more, we exceed the Revenue Neutral Rate. We will expend a dollar more than we did last year. So by state budget law, we exceed the Revenue Neutral Rate. Andrew, do you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I think that's, that's correct. So the Revenue Neutral Rate is set by not, not the mils assessed against properties, but the actual dollars that the city brings in. And so the, while the Revenue Neutral Rate is 32.859, that is based on the assessed valuation currently of all the property in the city, what would the mil levy rate be to bring in the exact same amount of dollars that was brought in last year? Obviously, that doesn't mean that 32.859 was the mil levy last year. That's lower than the mil levy was last year. And so this, this public hearing you just went through, and this resolution, obviously, the actual budget will come immediately on the heels of this, but is the process by which you determine, are you going to exceed that Revenue Neutral Rate? And the recommendation from the staff is, as you will get in the budget in a moment, is yes, to exceed that, to be at 36.667, which I think is the same actual mil levy rate that was last year. So the mil levy won't change, even though the city will, by virtue of property appreciation, likely bring in more dollars with that same mil levy.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution 24-770 to exceed the Revenue Neutral Rate of 32.859 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
Mayor, we will need a roll call vote on that.
Understood.
So I have a motion by Todd, second by Kendra. Roll call, Bill.
Matt?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Right by the assist. Motion passes. Move on to the public hearing for fiscal year 2025 budget.
Mayor and council, this is the public's chance to voice any of their concerns or otherwise as it refers to the budget that will be presented tonight. That is the item after this. Once again, just like the Revenue Neutral Rate hearing, you open the hearing, listen to comments, and then close the hearing.
Understood. Thank you. So I open the public hearing. Debbie?
Sharon Hopson.
Cheryl. You have three minutes.
Good evening, again. I'd like to thank you guys for putting in the, the budget and put it in the packet, making some things visible. Still have some questions around a few things in there. I didn't have a chance to really examine it as much as I wanted to. But that can come later. As far as the budget itself, looking through that, it's considering the fact that we've lost a couple of businesses. We're gonna be having the intersection and all of that closed for eight to 10 months. And we haven't increased as far as any families moving in, new residences. I think your budget is a little aggressive at, for this time. And some other things to think about with that is that if, one of the things is the adding the police officer at this time. You know, I, I'm all for adding police officers and making sure that we have everything that we need. But with us losing a couple of businesses, all of that, to me, that seems like that's a, it's a little aggressive, maybe forward thinking. Maybe that's a next year type of request, because that also includes a car. So another thing is, instead of, you know, using the money for that, you know, one of the things we're really trying to do is we're trying to, you know, promote Kechai, right? So use the money for that. You know, our neighbors there, Park City, they're putting in the aquarium, you know, it's really cool, right? They're doing all of that stuff over there. This is our chance. This is our moment that we can build Kechai, right? Let them have the apartments. Let them do all that. We can build Kechai. We can put in the coffee shop. We can put in the ice cream shop. We can do the, maybe some more Downlands. We can do all that. That, this is our time, but we have to spend money for, to promote Kechai. And we have to get in with Wichita, Chamber of Commerce, all of those people, so that we can, instead of just talking amongst ourselves, saying, hey, it's cool to have a coffee shop here. You know, maybe we can find somebody that will want to invest in Kechai and do some businesses here that actually relate to the art business district. So that's my thought around that. Let's spend our money to try to make money instead of making the residents pay in taxes for our improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, and I certainly agree with this lady that just spoke. And as a senior citizen, I think I'm the oldest person here at 83. But I do not feel there is a need, a real need to raise taxes in Kechai. I also feel that considering, as you said, extra things on the budget should not be considered for Kechai. We need to attract people to have the money for a franchise here and put in a grocery store. Put in something that the general public, even a laundromat, for people who need a laundromat, need a grocery store, need another filling station for competition. We need to attract people to have the money with, that can invest in a franchise. And I believe all of you will understand that and possibly agree. And see if you can't do something that will attract, not detract. You're gonna detract a lot of, a lot of traffic with this Oliver and 61st Street. Sorry to say, but it was a bad decision, in my opinion. So thank you again, and hope you get some action on it.
Thank you. Next, Joni Harris. Joni.
Joni Harris, 109 West Tupperware Street, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. At the conclusion of updating Kechai Strategic Plan with PDC this year, the council determined economic development was your focus, and you identified four points of focus: managing growth, preserve, promote, and encourage Kechai they live in now; address gaps in transportation, attracting new business, and encouraging economic growth. Yet, the council determined their priority for the 2025 budget would focus on hiring more staff, newer vehicles, and finishing road projects. All good things. Some of these items are already budgeted for, but some are not. And why were no dollars allocated toward economic development if the council intends to spend money in a proposed budget before you? Without increased economic revenue, you are choosing to place the burden upon property owners to support these decisions, specifically additional staff. This is a decision for increased property taxes by capturing the full increase in assessed valuation by keeping the mil levy flat. There was no discussion by the council to ask the city to provide a budget option to lower the mil levy even slightly, which would communicate to property owners that you recognize and share the burden. This council can still choose a Revenue Neutral Rate and not capture the $128,000 by removing some budget items from the proposed 2025 budget, thus lowering the mil levy and reducing tax burden. Most of the tax authorities that make up Kechai property taxes were determined this year to provide some measure of relief for 2025, even small adjustments, as property owners are heavily burdened by annual increases to their property taxes. In addition, with the upcoming intersection project and road closures and the unknown impact on revenue for a projected eight to 12-month period, perhaps the council should exercise caution and wait before moving forward with more spending. A new police vehicle was purchased in 2023. Could the council delay the purchase of a new vehicle until 2026? Similarly, additional new staff hires paused until 2026. Has there been a discussion of the potential financial needs that may arise for our small businesses who are in the core of the intersection project and the possibility of negative financial impact on them due to restricted access? Was there consideration of a financial fund to potentially assist our local small businesses should a financial need arise for one or more of them? Inflation continues to rise, and there are increases in the cost of goods, home insurance, mortgages, and on and on, which is making it extremely challenging for families, retirees, well, actually, all residents in Kechai need a tax break. Will the Kechai City Council decide to delay adoption of a budget tonight or modify the proposed budget and be willing to consider any of these points I've brought forward? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Debbie Hart?
Debbie Hart, 531 Prairie Creek Drive. So some of the points that have already been made, I absolutely agree with. I don't think we need seven police officers. I don't think we need the flock camera system. Those are all niceties, not necessities. And we are to the point where we need the necessities taken care of and all the fluff ignored for now, because we as residents are being crushed. Last year, my house payment went up $80 a month. This year, it just went up $130 a month. I can't handle any more increases, and you need to take in consideration, sometimes I, you know, that, sure, it might be nice for you guys to be able to have more staff, but can we do without it? Is it necessary? I, I would really, I would really encourage you to listen to the public input, that people are coming forward with heartfelt desires, needs, concerns, and that you would all listen to them. Sometimes I just feel like you guys have this money, and it's, it's, it's not monopoly money. There isn't any more available. We as citizens are being crushed under the taxes that we are paying. And it's, there's needs to be a relief not making more. And this is not monopoly money. This happens to be our money. It's the people, the residents of Kechai, and I would really like for you guys to listen to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing for fiscal year 2025 budget. Moving on to item 7D, Budget Ordinance 1834-24.
Mayor and council, what you have before you is the budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2025 budget. This is the same budget that we presented to you during the last workshop that we had with the city council. It includes some enhancements to city operations, specifically a new police officer to meet the service demands of the police department, a police vehicle, a three-quarter time customer service clerk to meet the demands of the administration here at City Hall, a replacement truck for Public Works, four mils dedicated to street maintenance, two mils dedicated to parks, to push some additional money to our parks, and roadway improvements too. Well, I thought I had them here. The roadway improvements that we had, Tigla was one of them, and Comanche, I believe.
I have Comanche Court, Comanche Street, Comanche Circle, and...
Yes, yeah. With the, with this budget, we are not increasing our mil levy from last year. This proposed budget is a 36.667 assessed mils, which is your property tax. It is the same that it was assessed last year. I will just say that one of the reasons we wanted to keep it the same is because Kechai has one of the lowest mil rates in Sedgwick County, only behind other small towns, Viola and Daughter. So we do have one of the lowest property tax rates in Sedgwick County. And I will be happy to answer any questions that the council may have regarding the budget.
Counsel, any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'm just gonna ask one, one question for clarification. So before, we had six mils dedicated to streets, and we talked about this.
Correct.
And the two that were moving to parks is moving from what we allowed for streets? Correct. Okay. Yeah, over the past several years, we've had six mils, roughly $134,500 dedicated to street improvements. There were some major repairs over the last few years that needed to be done. That money, that six mils has been put in there. It has helped repair those roads. We are now in a maintenance phase on those roads, so we simply don't need that money. That's why the decision was made and the recommendation to council to take two mils from there and put it to parks. We know that our, our public, our resident, residents, you know, they've been saying they want improvement to parks, additional green spaces. I think now is the time to do that, and that is a, a good way to do it. And I just bring that up, just in the fact that going forward, yes, we do need to improve the parks. We've talked about that. But when there's need for street improvements, again, remembering where that came from in case that needs to go back, I guess, is the only thing I... That's correct, yeah. And according to Thomas, we've had many conversations. We are in a maintenance phase now. So if we can continue to maintain our roadways, there shouldn't have, there's not gonna be any delayed maintenance to them that causes those major reconstructions. So Thomas is very good. He has a, a maintenance plan for the streets. We'll keep up on that. And, you know, it's just like maintaining your car. You maintain your car, you service it, you have less breakdowns and repairs. I'm just keeping track of those two mils is, is all I'm trying to do.
Any other questions, counsel?
I have a couple of questions. I have at least one question.
Go ahead, Karen.
I see in our budget that we have an increase for economic and community development. Could you address that for me, please?
Yeah, specifically, in, it did not reflect in last year's budget. There was $100,000 that we have in economic development that did not show in the budget last year, so realizing that, we captured that and put it in the budget. So, realizing that, we captured that and put it in the budget where it should be this year. So, that's why that fund reflects more money in that budget. So, economic development is money that we could use to stimulate businesses or residents to come to Kichai. Possibly money we could use, you know, if we had, if we have an issue with businesses during this construction phase, and we need to do something, it's something we could use money to look at assistance for those businesses. A myriad of things we could use that for that has to do with economic development. So, it's good that that money's there, and we will use it.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Seeing none now, I would entertain a motion.
Chief, could you talk a little bit about the Flock system? We've got a couple of comments on that.
Sure. May I?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the Flock system. Essentially, it's a, a camera system that operates 24/7. Cars that go by, it runs licensed places to the NCIC. It does not take pictures of drivers, it does not take pictures of objects. It simply photographs the rear end of the car. And we're able to use that as a database to search for suspects, particularly crimes that maybe relate to the surrounding community. And that includes, really, you know, the Wichita metro area, but also the state of Kansas. And so, what it does is it sets up an app on our phones where anytime a warrant, an operator with a warrant drives by that camera, it sends us an instant text message so we can get to the area and make that arrest. Stolen cars, it sends us an instant text message so we can get to the area and retrieve the car. It also allows us to make entries into that database for missing persons, silver alerts, you know, the, the different things that we would use that for when we need to find a suspect vehicle. Has been utilized by our officers frequently here, not because we have our own cameras, but because we search other cameras and databases to solve crimes that are taking place in Kichai. So, with Oliver being the primary back road between Wichita, one of the locations would be there, and another one would be potentially Rock Point or 61st Street, depending on where we deem necessary to use those cameras. We had a pursuit that ended up in Councilmember Waldorf's yard because of a stolen car coming from the casino, using Oliver, coming through our town at over 80 miles an hour. It's in our backyard, it's here. We just wanna prevent it. And so, this is a force multiplier for us. Right now, two-thirds of your police department is attending council meetings. I have three working officers right now. I've got two other officers who cannot work at this point. So, you know, it's a, it's a force multiplier for us. It allows us to, to have eyes on the street 24/7 where we can, we can make those arrests and then those utilize the cameras to, to fight crime. The other thing is it's a deterrent. Make no mistake about it, criminal element understands and knows that that camera system is out here, and we will advertise it very well to make it understood that Kichai does have that camera system. And if you do come from town, we will, we will have to do catch you. So, that's what we're, we're looking at with that camera system.
Thank you.
So, but before your time, we had a few issues.
Yes.
Certain one issue. Do you feel the proper procedures are in place to keep that from happening again?
Yes, sir. So, since those issues, Flock does require a case number or a reason to access the database. It has to be logged. Command staff will have access to those logs and to be able to take a look at what's being searched, why it's being searched, what cases that's relevant to, and be able to supervise that system. And trust me, with the, the black eye that we, we took before my attendance here, before I, I came on board, that will be at the top of our priority. Unfortunately, we made the news again when that, that issue was brought up another time from issues of that system. But I can assure you, I've got staff in place, myself, my lieutenant, and my mass patrol officer to keep an eye on those.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
I do have a couple of questions. So, I see in the priorities listed for our budget that the Flock system is not listed there. Is the Flock system part of the budget that we will be adopting possibly this year?
I can answer that, yeah. Any, anything we did with the Flock system is not a capital improvement-type item. It is, it, what's considered relatively small-dollar amount item that would come out of the police department's general fund. This is where those monies would come from, yeah.
And I understand that it's not a one-time cost, it's an ongoing cost as well?
It's a subscription, yes.
Yep. You can start, counsel, at any time almost.
Just like Netflix.
We all sense that very frequently. Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions on the budget?
I think there has been some conversation about the, the number of police officers, and I don't know if you are prepared to address that or not, chief, but...
Sorry, chief, come back.
Chief, would you please come back and address that as well? I know that's a major concern for several citizens.
Sure, understandable. So, one of the things we have got to do, and it's been mentioned before, that, you know, there's growth in parks and entertainment districts. There's the nightclub that's finishing up Circle, I can't remember the exact name of it, Second Circle, roughing companies working on at the dog track. And the casino, and potential expansions taking place there. So, as noted, we, we've got a lot of stuff going on around Kichai, and we wanna attract people to Kichai. Well, safety is a key thing in that. It's, it's one of the top things that people look for when they move to the city. Right now, your police department does not have 24-hour coverage. Right now, I have officers rotating on call schedules, which is rather difficult, honestly, because when an officer has a three-day weekend, which they work, they work four-ten's. On that three-day weekend, they don't have the, the liberty to take a vacation or go somewhere or do anything. They have to stay relatively close to the patrol car because those evening hours are not covered. As I mentioned, we have two-thirds of your, your police department here tonight. I've got one officer on medical leave, I've got another officer attending the academy. Those two officers will not be fully ready to come back to the street. One in December, and then one probably well out to the first part of next year. So, that limits our staff down to three officers right now that are rotating the schedule. You know, it's, it's tough. It takes a toll on homework, it takes a toll on, on your personal life. Further, it takes a huge toll on the overtime. Overtime is, is taking a hit really hard right now. We are at 200%, I think, in our overtime budget this year. And it's because we don't have any staffing in those overnight hours when the calls come out and we have to get dressed, come into town. It's a minimum of two hours plus whatever time is taken on that call. So, staffing that overnight hour, bridging that gap, having a 24-hour police department, which would require one extra officer, would help eliminate overtime. At that time, the only overtime that you would have is if an officer had a late call. But even then, the shifts will overlap to where that officer can get back to the office, get the paperwork done, have hopefully enough time to get the paperwork done before the end of the shift, and then other officer can pick up the calls towards the end of the, the relieving officer's position. So, the wage structure, 24-hour coverage, they'll overlap just a little bit. So, that way, the oncoming officer takes the late calls, the offgoing officer finishes up paperwork, and it helps to alleviate overtime responsibilities.
I appreciate your detailed response, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief.
With the seven officers, assuming they're all back in staff, how many officers on every shift would be at that?
One. We would have one. Now, that does not cover my position where I'm taking care of administrative duties from the office. I still work in Monday through Friday, five-day work week. So, my shift will overlap a couple of those shifts where I'll be able to take calls if, if necessary. But at, at this time, it would be one officer per shift essentially rotating the ten-hour, the ten-hour schedule. Thank you.
Any other questions for chief?
Thank you again.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions on the budget?
If you have more, go ahead.
You're looking at me. Well, I'm looking at you in general.
Only look one direction at a time, I'm sorry.
I would entertain a motion, I'm afraid to do that again. Make sure it's the right motion.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 1834-24 to adopt the 2025 budget as presented.
Second, I have a motion and a second, and it is roll call, correct?
Sure.
Okay. I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra. We'll start with Matt. Matt?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Five yes votes. We have a budget. Moving on to new business, water warning resolution.
Mayor and council, what you have before you is a part of our drought response plan. As you all know, the city of Wichita, who we purchase our water from, moved to stage two of their drought response plan by ordinance that tells us we need to move to stage two of our drought response plan. Under stage two of our res, our response plan, we are asking customers to voluntarily refrain from class-one water uses during the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., which includes outdoor watering, either public or private, for gardens, lawns, trees, shrubs, plants, parks, golf courses, which we don't have, and playing fields, swimming pools, or other recreational areas, or the washing of motor vehicles, boats, trailers, or exterior of any building or structure, and wasting water, including permitting water to escape down a street, roadway, or other surface intended for driving purposes. That's specifically geared towards people with irrigation systems or sprinkler systems to make sure they're adjusting those so they sprinkle on the grass and don't spray out in the street. And making sure or failing to fix any leak due to defective plumbing. It applies to all class-one customers. Class-one customers are public work credits, excludes commercial.
Counsel, any questions?
I just wanna say thank you, staff. I know there was some confusion originally about the vertical location. So, thank you for working with everybody to make sure that residents and all of us understood what was going on and answering any questions.
Yeah, so, of course, we had to. We, Wichita, put out their directive, because we are a water customer of Wichita, that we had to implement changes right then. And we had to submit what our changes were going to be to them. Of course, we couldn't make anything official until we had the council meeting tonight, so that's what this is doing.
Thank you.
And these are the, the restrictions that will apply to Kichai only.
Correct. Any other questions, or any questions, counsel?
So, Matt, talk a little bit about communication to residents. I've talked to a number of people that had no idea that this restriction is gonna take place in Wichita.
Yeah, so, we, we put it out as best we can on our, our website and through social media, specifically Facebook. Those are, I'm sorry, we did put something out in water bills as well. The utility clerk put those out. So, you know, we try to notify everybody as best as we can. Of course, we can't go door-to-door. It's just not feasible, and make sure that everybody knows we really have had no issues with it. We've had some people call and ask questions, and, you know, they're completely fine. I think everybody understands the need to conserve, you know, not just in these times, but we should conserve all the time, you know, not just when there's restrictions. So, we, like I said, we just haven't had any issues. I think maybe Public Works has seen some people who've had their sprinklers spraying out the street, and they go up and knock on their door and say, hey, would you please adjust your sprinklers? But it's really our position that we use the education part of it and not the enforcement part of it. I really think everybody's doing a good job.
I was driving through Valley Center last night, we were sitting over there during the day, and it's like, their sprinklers are on. They had a little sign in the corner of the yard that said, "Well water."
Yes, yeah, yeah. And for the city, we have reduced watering at all of our city facilities. We do not have the sprinklers on at the park. We are not watering any of that. So, we are trying and doing our hardened conservation efforts, too.
So, the one thing I, I have been asked about, and I was surprised to see it was vegetable gardens because a lot of people invest a lot in that, you know, for their families. That is included in this as well.
It is included in this, and if council wants to strike that, I think they can strike that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the definition in these is straight out of the definitions within the city code. And so, that's why it is written the way that it is. I would also remind the council that this, this in Kichai is voluntary.
Right.
There's no enforcement to back this up. Well, Wichita is absolutely mandatory, and they have fines and things. That's not what we're doing here, that's not what we're talking about here, so.
I, I thought the vegetable gardens were excluded.
Under Wichita, it was.
That was, yes, yeah.
And like Andrew said, we are recommending people follow these guidelines.
So, Wichita actually struck the vegetable garden out of theirs?
I think for, yeah, for vegetable or food-producing gardens, they struck it out of theirs. However, remember that Wichita does have penalties associated with that. So, they could come right to a ticket if you're watering your cucumbers.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. That's the only comment I have that I've been asked about.
Matt, do we have any information, I don't, I don't know, or Thomas, do we have any information that since this has been implemented, have we shown any reduction? Or is that not...
Yeah, we monitor our water once a month, and we're not to that point yet, so I don't know what our... Thomas, unless you have further information?
So, yeah, there was a little holdup with that. Wichita's metering system is actually down here in the city. So, we were just on a three-year, basically, range that they're taking our three years. They, they currently fix the meter with this drought, so we'll see at, at first of September. I think we're lower right now currently. I think we've cut it to about half of what we, we used previously. So, Kichai residents are doing a really good job of cutting back, so.
And the last two Tuesdays, it's raining.
Yeah.
I've been listening to our prayers, you know, 'cause it rains on Tuesday here.
It rains on Tuesday.
And Thursday.
Yes.
So, I just went and read our stuff online, and I think it is a little confusing. So, I would highly suggest that council strike the vegetable part of it. It isn't very clear, and I don't think people have been following that anyway. So, I would highly suggest that we, or I think we, that you would strike it as a personal opinion. So, there you go.
So, I would entertain a motion unless you have other questions or anything about it.
I agree.
Hundred percent.
There you go. So, I would entertain a motion.
My move, we approve resolution 104-769 with the exclusion of the vegetable gardens as discussed.
Mayor, second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Karen's five up. Move on to council, or, I'm sorry. Adoption of the 2024 UPOC slash STO dash 1832 dash 24. Da, or, slash, 1833 dash 24. That was a lot of things.
Good job.
Thanks.
Mayor and council, this last agenda item before you is really just an annual thing that we do, kind of a housekeeping item. UPOC, and EOE stands for Uniform Public Defense Code, and STO stands for Standard Traffic Ordinance. This, what this does here is just incorporates the state statutes, the state laws on traffic control and criminal acts into our city ordinance that we're following.
And any questions, counsel?
I know this is very standard. Is there any major changes from last year that we recognized?
No, the changes are in here. Honestly, I did not look through any major changes. I don't... Andrew, you drafted that.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, we, as we do every year, we put together a brief summary of what any notable changes might be. Generally, changes are to conform to changes to state... Um, generally, changes are to conform to changes to state statutes for some Supreme Court case, which we had in this case on, on, uh, noise ordinance, um, out of Wichita, which probably doesn't apply to our noise ordinance anyway. Um, i- in essence, the small changes relate to, in the UPOC, most of it has to do with, um, treatment of potential perpetrators in small amounts of marijuana possession when they are seeking medical help. If they are caught with marijuana, or they have enough that's an intent to sell, then, then none of these changes get affected. But if someone comes that's, is seeking medical attention or medical help from a police officer, there's a little bit more leeway. And that is, again, to comply with some state law changes. The STO has kind of the standard, um, little traffic things. The only one that, that's really notable to me is they took a lot of pedestrian-type offenses out of being able to, uh, request suspension of, of a driver's license. So it, it used to be that one of the penalties or possible penalties for, um, and most of the STO, of course, is suspension driver's license. Well, there's a lot of things like illegal jaywalking or things that don't affect dr- driving, and so they took several of those out of being able to, uh, uh, result in suspension driver's license. But those, those are kind of notable things this year.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions, counsel? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So we need two motions, correct?
Yeah.
Two separate.
Yeah, and those are on the agenda item at the end there, two separate.
My move, we adopt and approve ordinance number eighteen thirty-three dash two four incorporating by reference the Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas Cities, the fortieth edition, as published by the League of Kansas Municipalities in twenty twenty-four.
Mayor, second?
Second.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. I want to entertain a second motion.
I move we adopt and approve ordinance number one eight three two dash two four incorporating by reference the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas Cities, fifty-first edition, as published by the League of Kansas Municipalities in twenty twenty-four.
Mayor, second?
Second.
I have a motion by Kendra, second by Todd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Now we'll move on to council reports. Does council have any council reports? Mayor has a report. When do, I'll try. Alright, here we go.
On July twenty-ninth, I attended the Movies in the Park. It helps by volunteering with my husband, um, with the police department. Thank you guys for letting us attempt to help you. Um, you had a lot of good time by the time we got there, but we, we did try. So, thank you guys very much for, uh, welcoming us and helping us with that. Um, on eight eight, uh, Matt and I attended the monthly, uh, REAP meeting. This meeting focused on the innovation and strategic focus for DoEQ and updates from our executive director REAP. On eight nine, Park City had invited me to their, to attend their groundbreaking for their downtown project. Um, I was honored many times with many different last names. Not really sure what I am anymore, but we'll, we'll keep going with it, um, for a partner, um, one of their partner cities during their ceremony. And I really appreciate the connection that Park City made with us, because that was a, definitely a joy, um, after many years of, uh, tension for all the cities around us to have that connection with them again. Um, on eight thirteen, I attended the monthly PEC meeting with Matt and Thomas. Um, we had a group review of projects and Todd was there as well, um, of the work going on here in the city. On eight fourteen, I attended an OMBAC with the Sedge County Commission and other cities in Sedge County. This meeting was sent out to the city administrators and the mayors to start conversations about proposed sales tax to help offset profit, property tax burden. There were just initial conversations to see if cities were interested in conversations, um, regarding this. Cities did agree that they do want, uh, more conversations and more language, uh, to see how that would look moving forward. Another meeting will be set with council members invited, um, for the discussion, um, for further movement. Um, you can go watch the news stories where I was interviewed twice by KSN and KWCH. On eight fifteen, I attended a KT fifty-four strategic planning meeting. This is continued discussion on group strategic focus. On eight seventeen, coffee and community. We had great co- co- conversation, coffee, and connection, and I appreciated everybody who came out, um, and we spent time. Hopefully, council members were there. On eight twenty, I chaired a committee meeting for the League of Municipalities in Wichita and for their legislative priorities, and what the city would like them to advocate for next year. Um, and that's all I have. Thank goodness. Any council, other council reports now that I've gone through my mess. Go ahead, Matt.
I have not, I mean, I'm going to steam them with your blessing.
Yes, please. You're good. Alright, um, we'll move on to staff reports. Um, public works?
Guess that would be me, huh?
I mean, I think so. Is your name Thomas today?
Yeah, today I am. Uh, so a lot of this repetitive, so I'll go through it pretty quick. You guys have it in front of you. The two things that I will bring up is, uh, we, we did our leak, our annual leak survey for gas throughout the system. Um, we found no substantial leaks. We did find a few nuisance leaks that we'll have to go back and tighten up and, and fix. Uh, the second thing, I'd like to, uh, you know, give a, uh, a big thank you to the residents of Kechai. Um, we were able to finish our LCR reports for our lead and copper. I think, uh, last week we were, um, down to about ninety-six percent or ninety-four percent that I reported. I was able to finish filling off those reports with some of my inspection forms and, and stuff and going back and looking. So, uh, we'll be able to submit that to the state of Kansas and hopefully that will clear us. And so those were the two biggest items. Um, but other than that, else, if you've got any questions for me?
No questions from me, but I do have a comment that I did meet two of your employees and they were, um, during their gas, um, PPH testing, very nice gentleman. So, just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and second that.
We've heard that a lot, so you guys are great. Thank you, Thomas, and congratulations on the lead and copper rule. I know you guys have been working very hard on that, so really that is amazing.
It's a two-year project that finally is done, so.
Yes, great job. Uh, police?
We've got quite a few things. A couple of them, uh, did not make the list in front of you, sir. Bear with me, police. Uh, so we do have a, uh, local interest in our open, uh, positional police department. Citizen Kechai is, uh, supposed to have his application to me on Monday, which, uh, appears to be a good candidate at this point, so we're gonna take a look into that, uh, kind of see where that goes, but, uh, always load whenever, you know, load them. People try to step up and make a difference in the community, so, uh, holding on to that. Uh, KDOT Special Traffic Enforcement Program, you drink, you drive, you lose, is underway. Uh, and that's for, uh, our Labor Day weekend. Uh, that is a, one of the mandatory campaigns for us to receive a grant. So, uh, one of us three are gonna try to get out and put in some hours on that, uh, so we can receive that, uh, that grant money when, uh, the campaign's closed up. And usually, it amounts to about a thousand dollars in, uh, spending money towards traffic safety resources for us. So those are things like our measuring tapes, combs, um, radar devices, PBTs, things to encourage traffic safety. So, uh, we'll see if that makes a couple stops, uh, working on that. Court clerk Casey Recker, um, she could not be here today, but I did want to, uh, read a letter of accommodation she'll be receiving on Monday. You'll see this on our Facebook page when it comes around. Uh, on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, Kechai Police Reckers Clerk Casey Recker was driving back to the station when she encountered what appeared to be a female juvenile distress. Casey feared for the child's welfare, went out of her way, followed and engaged with the child, uh, who she discovered was nonverbal. Casey noticed the child's appearance seemed out of the ordinary. The child was unable to communicate where she lived or inform her of her guardian. Casey patiently dealt with the child, which resulted in the child getting into her vehicle. Casey was able to transport the child safely back to the Kechai police station. Casey alerted nine-one-one, and ambulance arrived shortly thereafter to check on the, the health of the child. The Kechai police officer after conducting thorough investigation released custody of the child to a much greater relief family member. The child was thirteen years old, nonverbal, special needs, and could have been in grave danger, uh, had Casey not selfishly acted with compassion and empathy to ensure the safety of one such need of protection. Casey Recker is being recognized for self-assault actions, stopped and helped a child who was in need. She took it upon herself to protect the child and displayed substantial diligence while attempting to locate the guardians of the child. So, uh, hats off to her. Uh, again, it takes all of us to keep the community safe. She was aware, she saw something didn't look right, uh, and she stepped up in a big way and, uh, you know, showed what our, uh, what our police department, our city stands for, and that's empathy, compassion, and, and making sure we're helping, helping our neighbors. So, uh, it was, it was incredible. Uh, we're gonna get her, uh, recognized on, on Monday. She's aware of it. I wanted her to come tonight, but, uh, she's got the babies and bedtimes and routines, and we all understand as parents, so, uh, we don't want to mess that up, but I definitely wanted to mention her tonight, so, um.
Can we hear Casey around in the plaza in this?
In, in dealing with, uh, that particular incident, we realized that the lobby of the police department is extremely hot. We don't have a fan there, especially in the daytime. So Thomas, I want to thank you, sir, for getting a fan there, so we're, uh, when folks come to visit us or we, we, or take them, of course, in that lobby, it's, man, we could, uh, we could grow a rainforest in there against the worst weather, so. One say shout out there. Uh, Edward Jones, uh, served the food drive today, uh, at our police department. I believe there might be a dinner here too. I think I saw that, uh, they're collecting food, so I just want to make note of that. Uh, so that's a really positive thing in the community. And, uh, last thing on this is our KC just audit. We have that every three years. Uh, it's where the state of, uh, Kansas comes in, how patrol comes in and checks our, um, our NCIC database, uh, our searches, all the stuff that we talk about, kind of like with the law, just making sure things are in check with how we're, we're operating, and we had no violations. So three years clean record, and we look forward to the next three years. So, uh, that's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Can you talk about the, um, ARCAN training?
Yes, so, um, community service, or excuse me, community policing is picking up, so we're offering an ARCAN training coming up here, here, uh, shortly. Uh, I know Officer Watson is working diligently on that and making sure we got, uh, staff available. That's gonna be open to the community, so anybody can come in for that. We're going to try to get enough knocks along, uh, which is the, you know, term for an ARCAN. We're gonna try to get enough knocks along on, uh, onsite that we can send folks home with it, so they can have it in their house, uh, should they need it, um, it's there. You know, unfortunately, this is a, uh, epidemic that is just absolutely, uh, crippling our country right now. And that's why we have a movie in the parks, you know, I mean, it's, it's about spreading word and getting it out there. Um, on this particular drug, um, it's awful, and it's in everything. I mean, it's, it's absolute everything. So, just more we can do to, to help with that. I don't have a set date just yet.
Sorry, it is November seventh.
You have it. Okay, thank you. November seventh, there we go. So, November seventh, we'll have that training open in public. Please sign up. Uh, we've got a, a register form set up, so buy that one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for you? And the next Movies in the Park is September sixth, correct?
September sixth, yes, September sixth. There was a brief timeout that was on the thirtieth, but we pushed it out to September sixth. Uh, main reason for that is Officer Mouse, who's in the academy, has that week off for Labor Day. He wanted to attend and help and, uh, be part of the community with his family, so we bumped it out to six.
Perfect, and it will be the minions.
Minions, yes, yes.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Planning, zoning, stormwater, code enforcement, and whatever else Dustin decides to do today.
Thank you. Uh, zoning, one member from planning commission did, uh, step down. It's a much needed family time was, um, his focus and grateful for his service that he did. That was, uh, Luke Harbor. And our two new members attended the August Planning Commission. They did fantastic. They were engaged. They saw the problems. They listened. They asked questions. It was, it was great. Um, one case will be heard by city council in September. That was presented just the other week to planning commission. The other case, uh, at request of the applicant, will be heard in October at, uh, the first October meeting for council. Uh, IT, the resource material page, uh, has been put on hold to a higher volume of building permits and cases coming in. It, it's a lot. Uh, stormwater, I believe, uh, Thomas had mentioned the other day, uh, he can correct me if I'm, there you are. Um, rain down the drain is gonna be painted on some more of the inlet covers here in the next probably month, six weeks or so. Um, I understand there's no time date on that, just because he's a busy guy with his guy, with his crew. Um, code enforcement, any calls that come in are handled via the phone call, or, um, a letter was sent out today just to give somebody a notice about an issue that was brought forth, and hopefully that'll get resolved here in the next couple of weeks. Does anybody have any questions for?
Which case is being moved to October?
Uh, the very, the one that's taking place at two hundred east Kechai Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? No, I just want to make a comment that we did post the planning commission, uh, positions, um, vacancies on Facebook. Um, so if you are interested in those positions, please send your resident to Matt, um, so that we can, uh, look into you. Thank you. Thank you. Administration?
Um, I neglected some people online, so I'll have updated mine. So, um.
Congratulations.
I had inadvertently left off the clerks, so, and they do a lot, so, um, you guys have had a chance to read my stuff. I've been doing a lot of training. Um, you saw the results of some of my work this evening. Um, bank reconciliation appropriation reports, you know, kind of a, keeping it right behind the scenes. Um, the ladies in the office, um, I really want to commend them. Thomas talked about the lead and copper. They have been working diligently to make sure that the spreadsheet was filled out. They've worked directly with Thomas, with the public works guys, answering phone calls, following up. Um, and so the, the public works and the ladies in the office did a phenomenal job getting us to that hundred percent and, um, almost two months ahead of schedule. So, um, I really want to commend them on that. Um, and just, I put some numbers together there, um, just so you can kind of see what they do and why that other person is needed. So Chris, in July, other than sending out two cycles of billing and late notices processed, almost a thousand payments. Um, Debbie processed over a hundred invoices, and that might not sound like a lot if you spread it out, but the, um, Evergy invoice in and of itself, you guys see it as one invoice. It comes to her as sixteen different invoices. So little things like that. And so far in August, Chris has processed six hundred and fifty-eight payments, and Debbie has already processed a hundred and twenty-nine, and we still have a week left. So, I'm very busy in there, and in that, they still both had time to do some training. Debbie and Chris both did a career development for municipal clerks webinar. Um, at the very end of June, Debbie did a business etiquette, phones, emails, texts. So, uh, the governance group doing things to improve skills to be able to serve the public more efficiently and professionally. Um, and then Kate, Officer Watson, has been serving as our administrative clerk, and she has been doing a phenomenal job helping maintain, like I said, the phone calls, the customer service, um, helping us update spreadsheets, filing, covering, covering the front while they are at classes and things like that. So, um, she's also kind of been stepping up and handling, you know, some rebuilding permits and contractor's licenses, so I want to commend them on their job. That's my report. Oh, sorry, one more thing.
Go ahead.
Simply hygiene, it is, um, doing a, a drive for hygiene products for low income, um, everything from body wash, shampoos, laundry detergent, toilet paper. We have a pretty big bin that was just dropped off today. That's gonna run through September thirteenth.
Awesome, thank you. I want to say, um, Debbie and Chris sat next to my, my other boss at a training here a couple of weeks ago, and they said, she said that they were wonderful, and they were great to be by the whole day, so, thank you guys. Thanks for not talking too bad of me. Well, and any other administrative anything?
I just have my report.
Go ahead.
I will just touch on a couple topics here, otherwise it stands as presented. I do want to talk real quickly about the meeting we had with PEC Evergy and myself and Thomas. As you will see on Oliver, Evergy came in and started poking holes in the ground where we didn't know that they were gonna be. Um, there was a breakdown in communication between Evergy, PEC, and the city. Once we realized that-
Once we realized that, I put a stop work order on Evergy. We got together with PEC, our city engineer. Evergy, Thomas and I walked side out there, had several discussions with them. And long story short, developed a different plan than they had to move those poles back specifically on 61st Street so they'll be behind the sidewalk. They had relocated and very close to the road and we did not want them close to the road. We, that's why we did all the gas line relocation is to get our utilities out of that right away where they were supposed to put the poles. So, they are back in the original place, I guess I would say, Thomas, that we had originally intended them to be. It'll really open up that area and make it look nice. So, the ones on 61st are going to have to stay where they are because of right away encroachment with those new big poles. Great big tall poles with.
I meant Oliver.
61st?
I meant Oliver.
Oliver, that's right, Oliver. On Oliver. Those great big poles with the big T-bar across the top, that T-bar cannot extend over anybody's property without having right to that property. So, those are going to stay where they are. PEC is making some adjustments to the roadway to bring those poles back off that curb line a little bit when they redesign that portion of the roadway. While we're on the 61st and Oliver project, I was just notified late this afternoon and I didn't even catch the date. I didn't read through the email. But I believe it is next week we have the pre-construction meeting with the contractor, the state, our engineers and the city. So, once we have that pre-construction meeting, we will know official start dates. We will know the traffic flow. We will know what portions of the road are going to be shut down when. We will coordinate with business owners to make sure we have access or the public has access to their properties, what the detour routes are. So, once we have that meeting, we will be able to put information out to the public to tell him, you know, what the detours are going to be, the length of the project, start dates, projected end dates, and all the other details related to that, so. One last thing, I met with the administrator in Bel Air today for our monthly meeting. And one of the things that he told me is that approximately 15 to 20 Kechai residents are using the rec services over there. That is the agreement that we came to with, with Bel Air where we would provide our brush dump for their residents. We know we have had an increase. We don't keep really numbers of who dumps over there. We know we've had some increases, but it's good to see that that program is paying off and that our families are able to use those rec services at a discounted rate because we don't have a rec service, so. Other than that, I don't have any good.
That's great news. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments, council, before we get to the night? If not, I would entertain a motion.
My move, we adjourn.
Mayor, second?
Second.
I have a motion by Karen, second by Todd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh, we are adjourned.